In accordance with provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, Selfage Planning Board will continue a public hearing on Wednesday, May 16th, 2018, at 7:15 PM in council chambers of the Town Hall, 41 Elm Street, Southridge, Mass. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comment and consider amendments to the selfage zoning bylaws, adding a new definition in Article 3, Definitions, Section 300.541, Registered Marijuana Dispensary, RMD, adding Article 5, Section 502.35, Registered Marijuana Dispensary, and allowing such use with a special permit in general business, light industrial, heavy industrial zoning districts, and adding Article 19, Medical Marijuana and Registered Marijuana Dispensaries. Copy of the proposed amendment may be inspected at the Town Clerk's Office during normal business hours. The original notice can be found electronically on www.telegram.com and on www. massmypublic notices dot com. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. David Peyer, Chairman, Selfage Planning Board. And just to remind everybody who is in the audience to please sign in on the form in the back. And we are being filmed and be posted in the coming days. Okay. Mr. Planner?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So this is a continuation of the public hearing that we are discussing medical marijuana and registered marijuana dispensaries. With that said, at the last meeting, what I've done was prepare some comments in regards to some of the suggestions and the recommendations by some of the members of the public that were present at that meeting. There was a comment in regards to Section 1903.2, which this is listed under Section A, that says that a registered marijuana dispensary... This is...so these are some of the site restrictions in regards to where registered marijuana dispensaries can be placed, and that's as it currently is proposed in the bylaw. An RMD facility with or without cultivation operations cannot be located within one mile of any RMD. Based on some of the other uses, particularly that was presented on that suggestion, I would recommend the planning board strike that from the proposal, so then we wouldn't have any restriction on distances between each RMD, understanding that we have the buffers in place for that. To step back, I do want to discuss the suggestion that we looked at 500-foot buffers from all features, which I presented to you in a map. That map is available online as well. It shows where in town these registered marijuana dispensaries can be located. Now, the 500 feet would be from any public or private preschool, primary or secondary school, dancer gymnastics school, martial arts school, licensed daycare center, or any other facility where children commonly congregate in an organized, ongoing, formal basis under 105 CMR 725.110A14, or a public library, a playground, athletic field, or any other recreational areas where children commonly congregate. And that is spelled out in that particular section of Mass. General Law. So the 500-foot would be consistent with the state law for that. So that's presented in the set of maps that are before you, as well as the maps that are presented online. To go back to some of the comments, so I just wanted to inform the board that that is suggested. I don't have a bylaw with that struck out and put in for the next meeting, should we consider, you know, moving towards that. I will have a bylaw with those suggestions. Another recommendation that was provided at the public hearing was under Section 1903.2B, stating that facilities cannot be placed with 100, 700 feet, and like I mentioned, the 500 feet is now applicable here with the maps that were produced. I do want to suggest that back, I think it was probably the subcommittee meeting that we had with the joint meeting with the Planning and Development Subcommittee and Town Council, it was suggested that under 21903.2B2, owned by and operated as part of a campus of any private or public institution or higher learning, to strike that. I would recommend that if it is...the state would be doing its due diligence when they would review an application if, for instance, any industrially-zoned campus of higher learning, we have one in town, if there was some sort of daycare that would be covered there. But I do think that it is relatively redundant. Another suggestion in regards to Section 1903.2C, which states that...now, this one is a different one. This one is...a suggestion was that the RMDs should be operating between the hours of 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM, and suggested that they are too restrictive. They should be allowed to stay open until at least 10:00 PM. That's reflected in the minutes from that meeting. Stores in town have various closing times from the pharmacies to the liquor stores that happen to be close to the...that happen to exist in our town. And possibly the only conditions placed on the special permit regarding time of operation have been on any sort of construction activities and/or home-based businesses in residential zones. And the planning board, serving as a special permit granting authority, often in regard to those home-based businesses, do provide those conditions. You can suggest that it not be present as far as hours or a set of conditions, or we can proceed if you think that the planning board, as far as recommending or supporting a bylaw to be sent to the Town Council, should still include that. But I just wanted to inform you that based on that timeframe that the planning board has in the past, as serving as a special permit granting authority, issued special permits with the conditions that operations should exist between certain times. I think that probably is it in regards to some of those suggestions.
What about 1903.2C? No RMD is to be located within 700 feet of any residential district. Isn't that redundant since we've already...within 500 feet?
Well, the reason why that's in there is that state law doesn't prohibit any buffer between residential districts. This is based off of other town zoning bylaws that have established RMD and recreational marijuana establishments, those buffers. So this is not something that's uncommon to place a buffer between a residential district or a residential structure in a non-residential district, and that stated there. But if the board wishes to explore either lowering that between residential districts or eliminating that, that's something that can be reflected in the next set of bylaws that you'll be reviewing. I do want to inform you that I did receive public comment, actually from our Planning Board Vice Chair, with some suggestions to the zoning bylaw, exploring...and, Mrs. Spinelli, if you want to stop me at any time, please do. Exploring separating the different types of uses for medical marijuana. For instance, registered marijuana dispensaries, as it's established in state law, suggests that the various types of activities, like cultivation, like dispensing, are all clumped in there. So the way the bylaw is currently written and is proposed is that a cultivation would have to exist, as well as dispensary, would have to exist in a general business, light or heavy industrial zoning district. So what I understand, based on, I guess, what could be a starting point of discussion with the board and with the public, would be to discuss separating those types of uses, understanding their various types of uses, and understanding also that the passage of recreational marijuana establishments and those types of uses in state law does make it a little hairy to kind of navigate through. So we have to be very specific as to if we want to draw out those types of uses, rather than clumping it under Registered Marijuana Dispensaries. So providing some definition to those various types of uses. But what was presented, and maybe I turn it over to you, Mrs. Spinelli, as far as how you'd like to describe the suggestion.
Well, I was...what I tried to do after listening to some of the comments that were made and everything else was, instead of just talking about a dispensary, to break it down into four categories. So it would be dispensaries, cultivation, marijuana laboratories, and marijuana manufacturing, processing, assembly, and packaging. And what I tried to do was to take into consideration some of the aspects that we're trying to do with zoning updates. So, for example, by breaking it down, I allowed by special permit to have marijuana cultivation in single-family, and this would allow farm, farm usage, people who would. But then I set some standards for allowing this in a single-family zone. So I...and again, this is not all-encompassing. I'm not trying to be it. I'm just...I was just throwing out an idea. So, for example, in a single-family zone, to get a special permit, you'd have to agree that first and foremost, you must have a contract to grow marijuana for a certified dispensary. You just can't grow it on your own and say, "Oh, yeah, I'm selling this to..." It has to be verified so that we allow it. Then you have to have a chain-linked fence with a security top on it to make sure that it's secured. Then you have to have a lockable gate and entrance. Then you have to have a water usage plan because wastewater afterwards is in question. Then you have to have...so you have to have a water usage plan, a wastewater plan, screening to hide the cultivation. So those were some of the standards that I had set up to allow it, because I figured if there is an opportunity to try to open this up for cultivation, let's do it, but let's control it. So that's what I did. Then what I did was a dramatic...I use the word dramatic, change for me, because I think I've been very clear that I'm opposed to any of this kind of stuff. But anyway, I decided to do some standards for the central core. Because the central core is a unique and specific place, we spend a lot of money trying to develop it, we try to maintain it, we try to do anything else. So I decided to propose that for all of the four categories that I created, central core would be by special permit. And here's the standards that I set up. And again, they're only...so for central core, 250 feet from any church, school, children's associated activity, so you can go much closer to it. And my reasoning for that was that, for the most part, we have two types of churches or religious establishments in the central core. We have those that have been brick and mortar, that go back before I was born, and a long time, they've been there, they've been established. So you have Notre Dame, you have the church across the street, and then you have the church by Savers, the New Savers...
The Baptist Church.
The Baptist Church. And then we have some evangelical churches where they're renting out spaces and everything else. So 250 feet, I said, "Well, that's going to give you a lot of the central core is available." Most of Central Street, most of the main section from Hamilton to Central would be available, and other areas. And I'm even willing to go down to something even less. So I did that. Must have an acceptable facade with an unobtrusive signage. Must not have exterior or interior lighting that highlights the business. Must have secured and controlled access and egress. Must sign a community agreement. This is all for standards to allow it in the central core. Must sign a community agreement to give...I put down 5% of gross sales to the town to be used for downtown redevelopment only, so that they would become a partner in the growth of Southridge. Hours of operation, I put 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. That could be extended to 10:00 PM if you wanted to, or whatever. No hours of operation on Sunday. If you're going to have a medical...if you're licensed to purchase medical marijuana, then six days a week, to me, is more than sufficient. If you can't plan your time, shame on you, under most circumstances. No other business to be allowed on this premise for being a medical marijuana dispenser. You can't have any other business...
Within it.
Within it. So those were some of the things that I put down. I'm sure people might want to add more. I did this, and I kind of turned it in yesterday, so even members of the planning board haven't really had a chance to digest this. But I was thinking about it, and I said, "Well, you know, the downtown area needs stimulation." And this, if it's done right, and if everybody had a chance to read the Telegram and Gazette today, it was almost kind of prophetic for some of the announcements that they made about dispensaries being okayed, and some of them in the downtown areas. So anyway, I said, "Well, okay, maybe my thinking isn't that far off." So this is something that I think can be workable, can be done. It certainly needs to be tightened up, it needs to be...maybe it needs to be expanded, I don't know. I just created this as something to resolve some of the concerns and tie in everything as people have done into this adult entertainment thing, which was...is a name. It has nothing to do with it. It's just standards that we set. So these are some different standards. It's certainly...if you wanted to go by and compare it to the adult, you couldn't have anything downtown, and I'm certainly allowing it. And I think with public park in down there, that the central core could be a reasonable place if it's controlled by special permit to allow a dispensary, maybe even two. I don't know. I don't know how many would apply or what the conditions would be, but it's a beginning point, and that's what I tried to do.
Any member on the board, anything to say?
I looked at Larry's chart, and I mean, it's a great, great alternative to get us off the starting line with the original bylaw. Yeah, there's some things in here that Larry had mentioned that could be tightened up and tweaked out, but I think looking at the alternatives of trying to clump everything all together was what we were all stuck on. Because, yeah, cultivation is totally different than the dispensing or assembling and packaging. So breaking it into the three or the four categories, I think, is going to help us all look at each category and come up with some specialized standards for each category, instead of trying to lumpen them all together, because not all of them are the same. And I think, Larry, it's a great start, and I think this is something we could work with and tweak and move forward.
Anybody from the audience, the public?
I'm a tall person, so this is Jacqueline Ryan, 275 Marcy Street. I wanted to be at the last meeting, but I was not feeling well. But I watched it, and I was happy to see a lot of my concerns addressed, and I was happy that Ken came back with some suggestions, namely about it being higher institutions and striking out what is redundant language. I'm also really enlightened and really happy to hear that the board overall is thinking about making this a lot less restrictive and allowing it in the central core. As someone who has friends and family who use medical marijuana, it's something that has a profound impact on their lives and makes their lives all the better. So making it more accessible, especially if it's regulated correctly, is something I think we as a town should be promoting. So I just want to thank you on that. Not having seen some of the changes proposed tonight, I'm still a little worried about it being too regulated, too restrictive, and I would really continue to urge the board to make this less restrictive. My own personal view on this is, I think the state regulations go far enough. If you want to have special regulations when it comes to the central core, I think that's your prerogative. I think that's a fair argument to make. But past that, I think it's a little...I think the state regulations are enough. So I will continue to follow this very closely, and thank you all for your work. And I know this is not an easy topic, and I'm looking forward to seeing what you come up with.
I go.
I'm not that tall. Rick Nash, 50, Denison Cross Road, resident. Thank you all once again. Ken, thank you for answering questions all along the way as you have, and I appreciate the consideration from the comments that were presented at the last public hearing. And I'm quite excited to hear that Ken has given a recommendation to lessen the restriction of the buffers down to 500 feet. And beyond that, through you, Mr. Chairman, thank Mr. Spinelli for thinking outside the box. I'm a very stubborn person, as you've probably gathered from the last couple of times you've heard me speak on the matter. But I'm very grateful for the consideration of such concepts. I think it's a great starting point, and I just want to extend that thanks. I can't sit in the audience and not say thank you for trying to help move this along. Thank you.
I go.
Good evening. Ron Sinangelo, Southbridge Town Manager, and I had not intended to speak tonight, but I heard Larry say a couple of things, and I just wanted to point out something I think might make some sense. I really appreciated to hear him talk about a community agreement, and, you know, he suggested what I thought was a pretty good idea of allocating, and I'm not sure what the tax would be. I think that would be negotiable under whatever the state guidelines are, Larry. And I kind of like the concept of going back into the downtown development, but I really think that would be a position to be decided on by the Town Council and how we allocate funds. So I think having a requirement of, be it a special permit or whatever, that a community contract would have to be established, I would leave the terms of that community contract up to the Town Council and to our legal team to work with me to establish that. So I like the concept. I think that fits more in the purview of Town Council for how that compact would be done. What we would do, obviously, is look at agreements across the state, what other towns are doing, and make sure that whatever we negotiated was fair to the town of Southbridge and in line with what is happening all across the state. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I speak, I got a question. You may or may not know the answer. One of you probably do. I know that the former business development person knows a lot about municipal government and how things are done and how they're not done. But if people collect signatures and bring this back to the ballot in November and reverse the decision made by the, what is it, 9, 10% of the people that voted in the town election last June, can...were you guys going to have to redo everything all over again? Because many more people voted in favor of opening this country up to the cannabis industry. And then in our little town election, it had a significantly smaller representation of the voters. They voted against it. I voted the wrong way, because I didn't...I should have read it. But some people told me they read it, and they were still confused. My concern, you know, when we have our public officials talk about the decisions they're making, they'll discuss the way it's done, and they'll mention one, two, three towns in the Commonwealth, how it's being done there. I find it interesting, our neighbor to the east, Webster, is very much the size of our town, not geographically, but population-wise. Used to be about the same in terms of the earning power of the people. They've kind of come out ahead of us. But they're making a quarter million dollars a year from one dispensary. I didn't know we were so wealthy we could just throw this kind of money away. Quarter million dollars, single dispensary, a year. We have...I don't know, there seems to be a fear. Like, I don't know why, like, at the hearing I watched on television, I almost couldn't believe some of the things that I heard at that meeting. I don't want to get into them specifically, there's no need to. But they're talking as if it's bad for children to be near a medical marijuana dispensary when the President of the United States and his drug task force are looking at what's happening at our cannabis medical facilities as a solution to our opiate problem, a much less addictive, much more effective pain reliever. It also completely...the best place to look if you want to research it, University of California Medical School at San Francisco. And many of you already know, the second greatest medicine that was used in our country a century ago was the cannabis plant. It's been used for over 5,000 years. And yes, people getting high like they did in the '60s is probably the fourth thing you can do. What's amazing about that plant, the seed itself is a perfect combination of fats, proteins, and carbohydrates, very high in omega-3 oils. I know somebody, I was going to get involved myself, I need to make money. There's a whole segment of the industry that it's being overlooked in this, and it's the agricultural industry, not of the marijuana that gets people high. I'm sorry, I apologize for people for using the term marijuana, because many people in the Hispanic community in this country consider that an ethnic slur, cannabis. I correct myself. The cannabis plant, a kind that you could smoke 10 joints the size of a kielbasa before you'd get high, that type of oil, which can be used for fuel and food, I don't even...at this point, the way this is looking, people that want to do that, to take that agricultural direction, there's no guidance in this. I don't know how that's going to work. I suspect it would be a problem. And they'll make each plant or a number of plants get tested just to make sure that they're not the variety that gets people high. And there's a lot of effort going into this. I wish...and a town manager put an incredible effort to try to... I wish, and a town manager put an incredible effort to try to do something about our opiate problem and put out a very well-thought-out program that appreciates, that has the involvement of professionals, healthcare professionals, and law enforcement officials. They go through all that work, so he's done his part. I mentioned this before, before the council. When you send a message out that marijuana, cannabis, is such a terrible thing, that the town takes such extraordinary effort to stop it, now, we have, and the police do their best, no less than 30 crack houses in this town amongst our neighborhoods. And it really bothers me that it's easier to get crack in this town than marijuana. Do we want our children smoking either of them? Absolutely not. But you don't have to answer me, but what would you prefer your grandchildren or children to be smoking? I've gone before our Board of Health and asked them to do something about the crack pipes that get sold openly in some of our convenience stores, and they look at me like I'm from Mars. It's like, well, what do you want us to do about it? They weren't rude, but it was like, why is it so easy to get cocaine in this town and marijuana is being fought like it's, and marijuana is a bad side of this. And a kid smokes marijuana, it can mess up his entire educational future. But because of that fear, and it's a legitimate fear, you're going to scare away hundreds of thousands of dollars of revenue for this town. I know there's a small, I guess you could call it agricultural slash renewable energy college, similar to Goddard College up in Vermont, that's looking for a home somewhere in central Massachusetts. They're not even going to look at towns and go and forbid this. So just keep that in mind, because you haven't looked at the agricultural aspect. It's not discussed much. Because the federal government is looking at this as a solution to the opiate problem, maybe there shouldn't be a rush. I mean, you guys are doing your job. This is before you. Somebody put that on the ballot. But I think, I'd really hate to see you do all that work and have somebody else put this on the ballot in November, because that's the type of election, the federal election, where a lot of people show up. And then all this work goes to waste. And I'd like our town to be open to business. We're pushing a so-called industrial park. The town spent $25,000 to have the state help us put together a plan to market that industrial park. I was on the Planning and Development Committee at the time, and they came back and saying, "It is not an industrial park. It's too small to be an industrial park. It should be possibly an office park after the smell issues are mitigated." Well, the smell issues are about to be mitigated. And someone told me, I don't know if it's true, pardon my ignorance of not knowing, but is it true that you're not even going to allow, if a company's willing to come into town, give us a quarter million dollars, they want to put some up on the industrial park, that they're not going to be able to? That they gotta, is that one of the places that's forgiven? That's excluded?
Yes, it's included.
Oh, they can go to the industrial park?
Yeah.
Well, glad to hear that, because that's probably, I would think, the best place for it. Can't believe all the rumors in this town. I'm glad that one is not true.
Mr. Chairman?
But...
John?
Yes, sir.
Even under the proposed chart that we had before, now, we're talking medical marijuana.
Yes, sir.
So this is only to do with medical marijuana. If the town revotes it, then of course, it doesn't change the medical marijuana thing. But, you know, medical marijuana, according to our proposals, is allowed by special permit so that you can have a little bit of control over it in retail business, general business, light industry, heavy industry, business opportunity district. And my proposal is for the central core special permit. So the only place that you cannot do it right now for the dispensary is in single-family, two-family, and multifamily zones. Any other place in town by a special permit, you can go.
That's what I get for not watching your entire hearing last week.
No, I'm just saying that, you know, sometimes people don't give forward a complete and true picture. So, and by doing retail, general, light industry, all of those by special permit, that's not something that's unusual, and we're not putting over restrictions as far as I can see as compared to any other towns. They're doing it by special permit also. What we tried to do, and the thought was to break it up, was because, and you've already made a point about it, as far as the cultivation is concerned, okay, let's allow it, because it was not allowed if you only have the one category. It's a no in any residential. Well, that's where all the farms are, is in residential areas. So I broke it down, but I did say, okay, I'm gonna, I'll go for that, but let's have some control over it. Let's make sure that it's the right, as you say, it's the right kind of cannabis, that it's controlled, that it's locked up. And I don't think that's anything that's more unusual. If you go to a liquor store, they lock it up, they control it, they have security things. Okay, I don't drink, so, you know, I couldn't care less if they get rid of all the bars in town or anything else. Doesn't bother me at all. But, so, and do I like marijuana? No, I'm violently opposed to it. But I also see that from a medical standpoint, cannabis has a tremendous value or a potential, and it needs to be more and more developed than everything else. I think what we're trying to do is to get started, is to allow this. We're not going to open up the town and say, okay, this is a free-for-all, come on in here and do whatever you want. No. And there isn't a town in this state that's doing it. So we're trying to follow some of the state guidelines, and we're trying to say, okay, we're going to try to open this up, and we're going to see what comes forward. And I think that if there's a company out there that's a responsible, respectable company that qualifies by state standards, we're going to welcome them with open arms. And I think this is the way to get started. And we're going to say, okay, if you need a building to grow it, find the building. If it's in retail, general business, apply for the special permit. And, you know, if it's, if it's a sound business and a sound application, it's probably going to pass the planning board. So, you know, what we're trying to do here is to say, okay, it's not personally the best of situations, but I understand it more from a medical thing, and that's why I said, let's try to do something that opens it up a little bit, especially in the central core, because I did. Now, you know, the community thing and everything else, well, that's got to be ironed out. That's not for me. I just put it down there as an example. But there are other towns that are doing this. And sure, I'd like to see Southbridge get a quarter of a million bucks out of it. Sure, because we're going to need it. We're, we're going to be in tough shape here, let's face it. But there's nothing wrong in having some control over it so that reasonably you ensure the company's well-being, that people have access to it, and yet other people are protected from it. People like me, who aren't crazy about it, are protected in the same type of a way. And, you know, sometimes, John, and you can understand it, that's a tough balancing act. I mean, it really is. It's tough. But I think, and I'm not defending it because I wrote this thing, I'm just saying it's a beginning point. It needs to be tweaked. Yeah, sure, I did this on a Sunday morning, and I'm sitting down here, and I won't tell you where I thought of this, because that's my usual study hall place, but I'm saying, wait a minute, we can do this. And yes, I'll be honest, this is a dramatic change for me, because I'm violently opposed to any of this stuff, you know? Because I was in Nam, and I saw a guy smoking marijuana. You know, I just, no way, no how, nothing. But I also, having been on this board for so many years, I have a responsibility to the town, and every other one, every other board member has that. So we're trying to make something that's good for the town. Is it going to please everyone? No. It can't.
You put time in, in the particular dimension or the aspect that you're most interested in.
People really need to see this as a beginning.
No fault of this committee, even if you did do your due diligence to even more than you already have, if you look to the state, there's very little discussion about food and the food and fuel aspect of this plant. But some of you may have heard of Cordage Park down in Plymouth. Cordage Park is named after what used to be the cordage industry. And what's cordage? A cord of the hemp stalks. It was, it can grow in a year. It's how the poor tended to stay warm. They shipped that stuff all over the country, and it was a good industry. And when you put that on, for example, and I don't want to get into this, because it's not a pleasant, you know, no one would want to be an immediate neighbor of this, but when you put it over sewer sludge, I'm told that it has an incredible success rate at removing the heavy metals. They go up in the seed stalks, they isolate that, so it actually helps clean sewage sludge. And there's virtually no remnant of the bad stuff in the stalk itself, and they burn that for fuel alone.
Yep.
And they absolutely never eat that seed. But, so there's a lot, so just please, as you're putting, please keep that. Now, the food thing, they make something like a peanut butter, apparently is highly nutritious, and they give it, in Europe, a lot to people that are on their deathbeds because it's a perfect food and it's very palatable. For some reason, the body really accepts it. But because of that 50-some-odd acres we have in that corner of the town, that it's going to have some, you know, it's best to try to remove some of the bad stuff up there. And this is one of nine plants. Geraniums are another one. They draw the bad things out of the soil. We don't want that there, because the town's talking about runoff. They talked at the meeting, a million, as much as a million dollars a year as a follow-up to what they're starting to plan with that $50,000. We don't want that runoff going down and then having to be treated when we can isolate it. There's so many creative ways, and the nice thing is they're labor-intensive. This town can use a couple dozen or a couple hundred, not great-paying jobs, but type of jobs where you can be proud, buy a car, buy a home, bring up a family. It'd be nice if our town had more of those. And this is one of the fastest-growing industries in the country, so it'd be great if we encourage it in every way we can. And of course, protect the children. I don't want to see retail dispensaries just for recreational marijuana use myself all over the place. Maybe one or two clubs, but as it is now, it's not on the ballot. So that's not what I'm advocating. I'm just advocating there's a possibility if someone wants to grow here or school wants to come there, we don't want them to say no because we seem like we're not friendly to the industry. Okay, thank you for your time. You give me a lot of time. I appreciate it. Thank you for your service as a town.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, following up with a little bit of what Mr. Palowski said, over the years, being on the other side of the fence, having regulations, as Larry described earlier, in place that specifically says what's allowed, what's expected if you're coming to the town is actually a benefit. Going to a municipality where it's a new thing and there's no regulations and so forth, a developer or someone who wants to come in there is probably going to look elsewhere because there is, they don't know what to expect, or they spend a lot of money. So if they have, like, we have a set of regulations that, okay, this is allowed under special permit use, okay, at least it gets us through the door that the town is open, open for some of the development of this type. It's actually a benefit to have a set of regulations in place for development to the town. I mean, I'm like Larry, I mean, I personally have seen a lot of abuses of the marijuana through college, through years and so forth. I've seen what it's done to friends and so forth. But again, I've also seen the benefits on the medical. And that's where, as a board, we've been able to, I think we're grasping onto of separating the recreational and the medical and the needs and the hazards, or whatever you want to call it, of the two types of marijuana use. So I think as a starting point, we're heading in the right direction. No one said this was going to happen overnight. I think it's evolved over the last two weeks, immensely, even over the two weeks, and it's, from there, it evolved from a month prior. So I think it's a work in progress, and we're narrowing it down. Exactly. And I think it's going to be a, when we're done with this, it's going to be a bylaw that is going to be palatable to not only business, but also protecting the residents of Southbridge.
Mr. Chair. So based on the information that was provided by the vice chair, I will help assist, prepare some amendments or some changes through, and will do a strike-through underlying of what currently exists as our proposed bylaw as we sent it to the town council. Again, you know, the, I think something to be mindful of is the definitions for those particular types of uses that we're trying to split up. I will say that because it's particular to the medical usage of marijuana, that definitions may not exist. As, as we explored with our proposed zoning bylaw for the recreational marijuana, those definitions did exist. And, but those were particular to recreational marijuana. So, you know, we'll come up, you know, I can present some topics of discussion for our next meeting using some of the guidelines that are presented here. I see that you've opened, and you've mentioned, Larry, you've opened up all of the non-residential districts to allow for those various types of uses with a special permit. So I'm going to reflect that in any sort of maps that I'll prepare for the next go-around. But I'll also, I guess what I also, something that maybe we should be discussing here before we proceed with, it's going to be a pretty big change from what you see now to some of the things that are presented here. The discussion of the buffer between a residential district and a residential structure in a non-residential zone. Currently, it's 500 feet that we presented. And that's, you can see, no, it was 500 feet from residential districts and residential structures that are in non-residential zones, non-conforming uses in those districts. So if you want to proceed with that number, you know, obviously, it being allowed in these other districts, there probably would open up other parts of town for that type of use. But I don't know if there was an exploration of any other buffer size for residential districts, understanding that, I don't know, I mean, that's something that some towns adopt, and we've discussed that, and as it was the case in the adopted adult use ordinance or bylaw, which we're not equating then, I just want to, you know, repeat that, that there was a, there was a separation between the facility and a residential structure or residential district. So if we're, as the board is looking at either decreasing that or maintaining that, that's probably some direction would be helpful. I don't know if that is, maybe we proceed with, you know, maintaining that. I don't know if that is, maybe we proceed with, you know, maintaining that.
I'll toss out a figure.
Okay.
Don't get shocked. Two-hundred-and-fifty feet.
Okay.
And I, I think, I started thinking about that...
You're talking about a house in a non-residential zone.
That's right. Because we have so much residential, we have residences in...
Industrial zones.
Industrial zones, general business zones, light industrial zones, retail business zones, that I, I, I think, I think we have to, I think we have to go down from that. And I'm going to make a reference and say, "Okay, you know, the adult entertainment, that was one thing, but this is something else." And again, my thinking has been, because all we're talking about here is medical. And so anything else, I don't even consider. But because we're talking medical, and because we're going to allow it under this proposal by special permit, I think the special permit process, we'd have to set up some standards to allow that. Obviously, we'd have to expand a little bit. But I think there are locations and opportunities where we could allow this to occur that it would be totally safe because we're not talking recreational. We are talking medical. And so I think a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer is going to, I think it's much more realistic. I wouldn't go down lower than that in my own feelings, but that would certainly be a, a beginning point that I would favor. I would at, at least entertain that, for sure.
Are we looking at structures or the zones? What was your thought?
Well, I think we're looking at...
Structures.
Structures.
I, I totally agree with, if we're looking at structures. Because I got to tell you, the maps that you prepared, from the seven-hundred to five-hundred, seven-hundred to five-hundred didn't change one area in town. It was the same areas that were still available.
With probably one or two new parcels, right?
Yeah, and a couple new parcels. So, um, looking at that, it, it showed me that the, the restriction, that the buffer itself was like, you know, you've got to open up a little bit more area instead of the same five areas in town. And I, I agree that that buffer should be reduced.
So, so what the map is probably going to show if we eliminate that five-hundred-foot buffer as, as our GIS people at CMRPC do for us, is that if we, as, if the board were to review a special permit and, you know, that would go through both the zoning enforcement officer as they review site plans, right? We would have to determine that that facility was two-hundred-and-fifty feet from either a residential structure or a zone, or just a structure.
Well, I would use a residential property. So that you take the two-hundred-and-fifty feet from any point on the property line, not necessarily the structure itself.
Okay.
But from the property line, which then gives you a little bit more, but it's also much more reasonable because it's still a residential property, but let's go from the property line two-hundred-and-fifty feet out. I still think that's going to expand, open it up tremendously.
Yes. Yeah.
The only problem with that is, if we look at the, when we're looking at the cultivation, if you go property and say it's a fifty-acre residential property, that now would say you couldn't do it on a fifty-acre parcel of single-family.
If there was a fifty-acre parcel in a single-family zone...
Yes.
Um, and you had a facility, more than likely, I, I would, I, I, I mean, I can't speak for any developer, you would have that probably fronting, you know, the right-of-way to a street, and you'd be within some sort of setback. And, you know, my, being mindful of the Department of Public Health at the state level would be also very stringent on how they review that application. The two-hundred-and-fifty feet would be from that facility to either a neighbor or across the street. You obviously can't have two cultivation sites on one parcel. But, yeah, I mean...
Yeah, it, it, that's something that would have to be looked at because if you had two parcels, say fifty acres side by side, and they were in a residential zone, there was a house, a residential house on each, that means that someone could not take a back ten acres or five acres, do a, a cultivation...
Yeah, but we're not talking a residential zone. We're talking about other zones because of the non-conforming houses in it. Because when we go to a single-family zone, we've already said, "No, no, no for the zones themselves, except for cultivation by special..." Oh, well, that's by special permit.
Only, anyway, so it would be allowed by special permit. But I think, I think distance restriction is, is different. Yeah.
This restriction would be for any, any facility, any R and D or a cultivation, if we're going to be exploring that, that it couldn't be two-hundred-and-fifty feet from the closest, or it, it, it had to demonstrate that it was more than two-hundred-and-fifty feet from a residential structure. Understanding that that facility would be in the appropriate zoning district based on...
The table of use.
Yes, exactly.
I mean, two-hundred-and-fifty feet, remember now that you have the, the residence, the structure itself on the property, then you have the setbacks. So you're going two-hundred-and-fifty feet. It's not like it's a dramatic thing to go from the house to the, I mean, there's a lot of houses that are actually within the setbacks now, but the setbacks are only twenty feet, thirty feet on the front, ten on the side. So, you know, the two-hundred-and-fifty foot from the property line is not a tremendous penalty by any means. I mean, it could add ten feet to the distance from one side to the other, or thirty, or twenty in the back, or thirty in the front. So I, I don't see it as a tremendous penalty. I think it's much easier just to measure it by, you know, a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot mark as...
Okay.
It's a starting point, that's...
Any more questions from the audience?
Mr. Chair. I just want to say that I really like the work that Mr. Spinelli did. I think that it's a good time to remember that, as he pointed out, medical marijuana use is completely different than recreational. And one thing at a time, it's very possible that we could be dealing or we could be looking at recreational marijuana again, but right now, we're just talking about medical. And I think having it in the Central Core is a really good idea. It's a retail use. My understanding is that it's very highly regulated by the state. You have to have a special form or a permission to even go inside. And I've heard about the different types of products that they stock. It's a true retail use, so thank you very much, I really like it.
So we're going to continue this meeting, June the 6th, eight fifteen, but we're going to do it in Giar Hall, which is our home base down in the basement. So it'll be eight fifteen on June the 6th. And it'll be taped. Thank you.